Good evening, Milis. Both to the people who have kindly assembled before us this evening, as well as those who may in fact be tuned in from home. My name is Loring Barnes. I am the Chair of the Milis Select Board. We are delighted to have you join us for Monday, January 13th's meeting of the year 220. I'm going to introduce some people who you're going to be looking at for most of the night because we happen to be sitting at the front of the room. To my left is a longtime friend of the town and longtime statesman in government, James McCaffrey, our Vice Chair. The imaginary person to his far-left is on vacation, Peter Germaine, so you're going to hear some agenda items tonight that I think we will probably simply be announcing that we will be having further discussions about them, but we will probably opt not to take any sort of formal position to give Peter the opportunity to participate in that, which is what I think the community would want. To my immediate right, your left, is Michael Gazinski, our Town Administrator. And to his right is Karen Burey. Many of you interact with her. She is the Operations Director at the Town Administrator's Office. So, thank you and welcome. And I guess winter has returned, but it sure was nice to have two days of spring. First order of business is that we have an announcement about a closure for one and a half hours this Friday at the Town Hall for very important training. And I'll let the Town Administrator speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this Friday morning, the Police Department will be conducting an active shooter, violent intruder preparedness workshop. This is a refresher for Town Hall employees and volunteers. As the Chief has stated, these situations can evolve rapidly in the midst of chaos. Anyone can play an important role in mitigating the impact of an active shooter or violent intruder. The workshop will utilize the four Ls: to survive, locate, lock down, leave, and live as a repeatable, retainable, and realistic training program for civilians to use in a violent intruder situation. The workshop this Friday will be one and a half hours long, consisting of lecture time and demonstrations. And this program is widely used in hospitals, schools, and in the private sector. Unfortunately, it becomes more apparent every day that this training is important. While the subject is unpleasant to discuss, the goal is to empower individuals to be successful in a critical incident. And so, because of that, we're requesting that the municipal center be closed to the public from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. this Friday morning.
Do you have anything? Any comments?
No, I think that's a very warranted exercise.
Yes, I actually attended a similar type of training that the Chief conducted at the library, and I found it really informative. So, everybody is now put on notice, and there will be an announcement, I assume, on the outbound greeting and signage at the building. So, Town Hall will reopen after 10:30. I would say, give it a little bit of a cushion there. Next, I'd like to invite forward to the front table a person who should need no introduction, but who has been a really important member of our community. She still lives here, but she's going to be wearing a different professional hat. She's not in uniform, so you may not recognize Air Force Technical Sergeant Cynthia Harris, but she has been, for several years now, a very important link between the resources of the community and the resources that are available to the men and women of our armed forces, our veterans. And Cynthia has been involved in leading a lot of new programs for our veterans and providing them with extra support that their return from their service certainly warrants and deserves. And unfortunately for us, but fortunately for the city of Cambridge, she is a superstar. So while she will continue to be a neighbor and friend, she unfortunately will be resigning her commission, as it were, to the Town of Milis because she has a new big position in the city of Cambridge. And we wanted to reintroduce her for so -- for those of you who have not had the honor of meeting her, or any of her great kids when they come in to visit, but also to thank you from the bottom of our hearts and on behalf of the citizens of Milis, but also certainly for the members of the veterans organizations who have found you to be an indispensable and inspiring resource to them. So, we wanted to thank you.
Thank you. One, I'd like to emphasize, that is retired tech sergeant. Emphasis on retired. So there is no uniform needed, ever, ever, ever. It has been both a pleasure and an honor. I've had the honor of working with all of you, and some of you with your spouses or family members that are veterans. They may not be current conflict vets, but once a vet, always a vet. I've also had the honor of working with VA work studies, such as Craig Mugford here, who meandered into the office to ask a couple of questions, and the next thing he knew, he was getting a job that we have worked together for about two years or so now. And I've watched him go through undergrad, and now he's in grad school. So, the job has rewards that far outweigh anything tangible. Lifelong friends.
Well, we also wanted to say that Cynthia is not leaving us in the lurch, that in fact she has participated in some referrals for somebody who we would never call her replacement because we would consider you to be irreplaceable. But having said that, we want to thank you for everything that you have done and hopefully will continue to do as a member of the Milis community. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Before you leave, be sure to pick up a volunteer form on the way out. There's plenty of boards and committees that you could serve on.
I do have the talent bank form.
Okay, good.
Excellent. And you have the talent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks so much, Craig. Thank you. Is Mr. Bullion in the office, in the audience, here somewhere?
I do not believe he is.
He is not. I did not think so. We also have another change, which creates an opportunity for somebody in the audience who feels that they have some ideas and some time to lend to a very important topic, which is town finances. James Bullion has announced that he and his wife plan to relocate to the Live Free or Die State. And after raising their kids here and being an important member of the community and a selfless and tireless member of the Finance Committee for many years, I personally really admire Jim because I feel like we share some DNA that we're willing to ask tough questions and to do so under the cleat lights of the public spotlight. And that doesn't always make you popular, but it definitely makes you feel like you're doing what you signed up to do as a citizen volunteer. So, on behalf of the Select Board of Milis and the entire community, and I know I speak for the Finance Chairman, Finance Committee Chairman, Jody Garzon, when we say that, Jim, you've added a lot to the discourse, to the planning, and to the strategic, long-range decisions of the town for your time and participation on the Finance Committee. And we also want to thank you in absentia. And I know that my colleagues had a lot to do with the Finance Committee, and perhaps you would like to add.
Well, I do think that we need to take a moment to thank Mr. Bullion. And Finance Committee's role is pretty important in this town. It's the link between the Town Meeting and the departments and the departments that report to the Select Board and the School Committee. So, he will be missed, and it does hopefully create opportunity for someone who thinks that they have the time and expertise to help out the town and all the folks who live in it by serving on the Finance Committee. When I was a moderator, I did appoint a lot of people, and sometimes it was hard to recruit. But hopefully, we won't have any lapse in service, so to speak, and we'll find someone who is eager and anxious to participate. So again, but thanks to Mr. Bullion for his service to the town.
And if you see him in Roach Brothers, you can snag him and thank him personally. His face has been on the camera quite a bit. Next up is our poor guy who never got to celebrate his birthday, DPW Director James McKay, who spent this weekend not enjoying some of the temperate weather, but in fact, dealing with the unintended consequences, which were falling trees and other events that required immediate attention. So he is here to do a couple of things, to update us as to the transfer station and the type of services that they were able to put together even though the entrance was blocked, and also to speak about the transfer station trash bags, the second-tier program that we added last year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is just an update, mainly when we first started, with the update on the plastic bags. The Select Board, about, I would say about six months ago, directed myself to look into selling two different-sized trash bags. Most communities do have that. Milis has been selling them, I'd say, almost the past five weeks. And I just hope people realize that they are for sale. And we advertise they're in Roach Brothers, and they are, Namaste is selling them, and I believe Rich Dales is also selling them. The size of the bags have reduced. It was mainly for seniors, or when you just have that, you know, you don't want to put that fourth or fifth bag of trash into a large blue bag. So, they do hold approximately two white kitchen trash bags. They're $1.25. That's 50 cents cheaper. And I don't know, I've been heard different accounts, and I can't, you know, track it down. I mean, this is, we set the rates. The stores do not make any money off of this. And they're sold for $1.25 at all three locations, or you can only buy the roll at Roach Brothers for $12.50. That's for the small trash bags. The larger trash bags are the same. They've been that price for the past six, seven years. And they're $1.75, and the roll is $17.50. So if somebody's charging you $20 a roll, I don't know where that's -- I'd like to get, you know, people get in touch with me and let me know who's charging somebody $20 for a roll that should be $17.50. In the update on Saturday, I, you know, we did all live through that windstorm that, you know, came through Milis in Massachusetts. We did have a tree that fell down right as we were closing for lunchtime at the entrance of the transfer station. And luckily, you know, we did get four or five DPW workers to come in. And what we did is we brought one of the containers from the DPW. We brought it around. So we did accept all blue trash bags. So anybody that came to the transfer station that, you know, didn't see it on the Milis Public Forum, they were allowed to drop off their trash. We just asked them that they could take their leaves and brush back in their recyclables. So we were thinking of opening it on Sunday, but at that time, it was a little too late to get workers to come in and work on Sunday. And it's a good thing we didn't because the first thing on Sunday morning, another tree fell right across the road, and the transfer station was blocked from 6:00 to almost 5:30 Sunday night. So, we did open today. We had a few people that came in. They were instructed to call the DPW. We were open regular Saturday hours. And it worked out pretty well. You know, you can't please everybody all the time. And as we can tell, it was, we didn't please a lot of people, but there's not much we could do about it. But I do want to thank the, you know, the five people that came in. They did a lot of work of getting, you know, make sure that the residents got their trash taken care of so they didn't have to bring it, bring all the trash home. And I will update more about the transfer station. I think that if anybody read the Boston Globe or an article that was posted on the public forum about recyclables and what small transfer stations are faced with, I would encourage you, if you're a transfer station member, I would look into the Sunday Globe, and I would read that article. I mean, it's the, as I've been projecting for years, the cost of getting rid of the recyclables, meaning recyclables as paper, cardboard, all the plastic cans, bottles, and so on, so on. It's getting to an exorbitant amount of money that, you know, this board's going to have to make a serious decision this fall of what we're going to do come July 1st. And I'll present that during my budget presentation.
Excellent.
Okay.
Any questions? Any comments?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Jim, excuse me. Chapter 90.
Oh, I'm sorry. Totally missed.
I'll wait for the, we've got to do the other stuff. So, go ahead.
Yeah. So, just to make the board aware, as part of the announcements, that as part of the Legislature's supplemental budget, which was recently approved, they did vote for an additional $20 million in Chapter 90 transportation funds for fiscal year 2019. And the good news is that our, we have received a supplemental amount to our Chapter 90 funds, an additional $27,265 for a total apportionment of $299,912. So, every dollar certainly helps. And I'm sure the DPW will make good use of those additional funds in keeping our roads clear and safe for the public.
But in reality, $27,000 doesn't pave a road.
It won't fix the whole problem.
Right.
But it'll certainly be helpful.
Got it. Excellent. Any other announcements that you might have? I'm going to invite Mr. Bob Weiss in his capacity as our Energy and Sustainability Officer to address the board and the community about our electrical aggregation efforts, which he had introduced to the community last fall. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me thank the committee for appointing the Town Administrator and myself as the delegates to oversee the community energy, or electrical aggregation process. And after reviewing the bids on November 18th, along with our broker, we determined that the prices that came in from the suppliers were just not good enough to justify going ahead with the program. They would not have delivered enough of a savings compared to what people are already paying to Eversource. So we feel best strategy now is to wait, which is, this is our Plan B all along, is to wait until the fall. At that time, we will have the advantage of being a member of a larger consortium. We'll also have the advantage of a longer-term contract. That will bring down, enable us to get better, lower rates on the bids. And we can start the program flowing in early 2021. So we're going to have to put it off for a little while.
Can you just backtrack with one simple explanation to residents in particular, what electrical, energy aggregation is and how it benefits them?
Sure. Under electrical aggregation, everyone who pays an electric bill to Eversource and who uses Eversource's default supply rate would be in a pool. And that would allow us to oversee going out and getting bids from suppliers. And because there are 2,500 families and ratepayers and business, small businesses in this town, we would be able to go out and get a better rate that's on the supply side than Eversource can get for us. So that would entitle everyone to get a little bit lower rate, a little discount on their electricity. Everyone would automatically qualify for this rate. Everyone who is, as I said, on the default rate already, they always have the chance, opportunity to opt out. That's an important feature of this program. Anytime you want, you can opt out of it. So everyone in town would automatically qualify for a lower rate, unless they are already getting a supply from a third-party supplier.
And this is something that we all voted on at Town Meeting, correct?
Yes.
Just so everybody understands. Okay, great. Any comments? Any questions from the community before us? Okay. Thank you so much, sir. Oh, nope. Don't go anywhere. Next up, we have appointment of ex officio Permanent Building Committee members.
Yes.
And this is where you change and now wear your Economic Development Officer hat.
Right. Change hats here.
Okay.
And this gets a little confusing, but I think we all pretty much understand. The Permanent Building Committee is about to review a proposal that will study the feasibility of renovating the Lansing Memorial, the Old Depot on Exchange Street. The Economic Development Committee has asked me to ask this board to appoint ex-official members from the Economic Development Committee to the Permanent Building Committee, just for the purpose of advising on this issue. The committee asked for the appointment of two of its members, Nate Moltinsky and Loring Barnes. But at the time that they asked me this, the committee was not aware that Mr. McCaffrey is already on the Permanent Building Committee. So, in order to avoid a Select Board quorum at the PBC, I'm asking on behalf of the committee to appoint Nate Moltinsky as the sole ex officio.
Any conversation about that?
Madam Chair, I think that, two points. One is, I think it's prudent to not have two members of the board appointed to the committee. That doesn't preclude members of the board from attending the meetings and making statements. But this is just an imitation to deliberation. But I would like to make a comment and perhaps a suggestion that when we asked for representation for the Council on Aging for the Senior Center Study, we had a member of the council, as well as the director, serve as ex officio members. And I would ask Mr. Weiss and you, as a member of the Economic Development Committee, would it be prudent for us to also name Mr. Weiss, as well as Mr. Moltinsky, as ex officio members for this project?
I'm fine with that. And it's obligating you to another meeting, so.
And which is perfectly fine with me.
Yeah. No, I think that makes sense.
Yes.
Well, then, I'm happy to make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Nathan Moltinsky and Mr. Robert Weiss to serve as ex officio members of the Permanent Building Committee relative to the Lansing-Milis study.
Second, it's been proved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And I would like to invite you to the meeting tomorrow night, where this matter will be considered. And I would ask that the Karen or Mike or somebody get in touch with Mr. Moltinsky and make sure that he's aware of the fact that this is coming up.
I heard from Mr. Moltinsky last night.
Okay.
That he would be coming.
And is it possible to get him a copy of the material?
Yes.
If it is possible, it would be helpful if he could get a copy of the material so he could be able to take a look at it before it is considered by the PBC tomorrow evening.
Yeah. I'll send him another notice tonight that he can pick up hard copy at our office, at the Town Administrator's office. And I think he's already been sent a digital copy of it.
Okay, fine. Just want to make sure.
And also, the architect who wrote up the RFQ
Mark Proofer.
For this, Mark Proofer also said he would be coming to the meeting.
Well, the meeting is an open meeting. Anyone with an interest in listening, yes, listening to the deliberation, participating in the deliberation, perfectly welcome, more than welcome, because it's an important component of the next step for a very valuable resource here in town, which is the Lansing-Milis Memorial Building.
Right. And this is a property that can really add to the Exchange Street appearance and to the Exchange Street.
Well, I was on the Board of Selectmen when it was the Town Hall, okay?
Right. It's a building.
Somewhat fond memories.
It's a building that's been through a lot.
Yes. Thank you.
And it's a building with a full-size vault, which is very interesting.
That's true, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCaffrey, you are up next with a proposed appointment to also the Permanent Building Committee.
Madam Chair, we have had a resignation from the Permanent Building Committee, one of the regular members. This is for voting membership now.
Yeah.
Mr. John Wine, who has served the town well, has also relocated and no longer lives in town. So he has resigned from the committee. The Chair let some folks know, and we had the good fortune to have two people step forward to, who are well-qualified, Mr. John Larkin and Mr. Rich Nichols, both of whom have construction experience and are willing to step up and serve on the Permanent Building Committee. This would be an appointment until June 30th. And the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee is, feels as though either member, either of these individuals could do it. I would like us to consider appointing Mr. Larkin. He's a, even though he's a 40-year resident, he'd be a new face. Mr. Nichols has plenty on his plate. I'm sure he'd find the time. But it may be advantageous for us to appoint someone who doesn't have any other responsibilities now in terms of serving on boards.
I want to echo that. And I actually had a conversation with the Town Administrator, which I'd like to share with you with respect to calendar convergence. And we're going to try and fix a tough problem and acknowledge it to the town for anybody that wants to go to meetings. Two things. One is that the website does have an online calendar, right from the front page. But if it's not maintained, then what happens is a lot of these meetings get scheduled on top of one another. So unless Mr. Nichols has some trick, he actually has to be running the Planning Board and presiding at the Permanent Building Committee at precisely the same time.
He would be, yes.
Would be a really amazing feat to see. So I would be inclined, for that reason alone, to invite him as a participant. But I don't know how Mr. McKay plans on splitting his time. Also, at the same time is the Cemetery Committee. And it's a little frustrating because I would like to attend some of these meetings myself. And I'm also, I'm named as a liaison to the Cemetery Committee. I can't be there. I can't be at all places at once. So anyhow, I would be in favor strictly on the basis of that to agree with the recommendation of Mr. Larkin. And we could either do that now, or we could wait for Peter to come back. And I'm going to leave that to be.
Well, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Larkin.
Okay.
Particularly because there's a meeting of the Permanent Building Committee tomorrow night. If he could make it, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. John Larkin as a member, a voting member of the Permanent Building Committee, serving the term until June 30th, 2020.
All right. Second, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Larkin to the Permanent Building Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Larkin, and thank you. But I also want to thank Mr. Rich Nichols. Many of you do see him on broadcast, broadcasts of the Planning Board or come in person. And he does a tremendous amount for the town. And I think it speaks, it does really reinforce, ask a busy person to get something done, and they will. So I'm sure he will regret having to be in two places at the same time. But hopefully, we can also figure out some of the, I would say to all committee and board chairs, hopefully, we can figure out some of these overlaps and disperse meetings a little bit more equitably across a calendar and not simply resolutely claim to a certain day, a certain frequency, because we're kind of cannibalizing the participation from a voting standpoint, but certainly also from a community standpoint. Ms. Burey, we have a common victular business license for the Italian grocerya and deli at 20 Exchange Street. Do we have anybody here from that business? Please come forward. And please grab a chair. And we're going to have you introduce yourselves to the town. Now, they're right here. This is right here. There's one there, and there's one right here.
Hey, how are you?
Hi.
So this is a new business in town, just to add. And they're looking to get approval for a common victular license, which allows them to serve food here in the Town of Milis.
Yes.
They are going to be in the location that was formerly known as Isabella's. And we are happy to have them. I know there's an Italian grocerya in Medfield, correct? Will it be same menu?
Yes, very much.
So I have all their information, insurance, et cetera. So we just wanted to hear from you as to when you plan an opening and how it's going.
And starting with your names, you have to pull the microphone closer or we get yelled at.
Yes, I am Pablos Schmidt.
Rafa Furtikovsky.
Wait. Try that one again.
Yeah. Rafa Furtikovsky.
Rafa? As in Raphael. I love it. Those of us who play tennis are used to. So tell us about your business.
Yeah. So we have one business in Medfield, like sandwiches, pizzas. And we are trying to do the same in Milis. We took over from Isabella's, the one in Medfield, and this one, the one in Milis as well.
From the same people, yeah.
Yeah.
The family.
And you're employing anybody locally? Will we know any of the employees?
Yes, we are trying to.
Okay. And what's your schedule for opening?
We are thinking to open in February 9th.
Okay.
If everything will be go smooth.
And your hours of operation would be?
Monday, 10:00 to 3:00. Tuesday to Friday, 10:00 to 6:00. Monday, 10 to 3:00. Tuesday to Friday, 10 to 6:00. And Saturday, 10 to 4:00.
So closed on Sunday.
Closed Sunday.
And you do catering, takeout?
Catering and takeout.
Excellent. Is there anything else we need to know in terms of this license? Any questions, sir?
So after Millis, then what's next?
No. Keep going down the...
Dover, Dover.
Dover, all right. Good. Makes sense.
There you go. There you go.
Three of the best towns around.
That's right. But Millis is top.
There we go.
Here it is.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. How do we pronounce the name of the LLC?
Parafa.
Parafa. So I make a motion that the board approve the license for common victular, for Parafa LLC, doing business as Parafa Italian Grocerya and Deli located 20 Exchange Street in Millis.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We're very delighted to have you. Those of us who drive down to Medfield will be happy to know that you're right here in Millis. So much success to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome.
Karen will have all your signed documents at some point, what, later in the week?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Okay.
Okay, great.
And before you open, come on in.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming and for introducing.
Feel free to make samples. We'll happily eat them.
Yeah. It would be very nice.
It'll be your...
Just with the renovation.
All right. Excellent. All right. Let me just grab a piece of paper here. Okay. All right. So we have, we're delighted to have more people than usual. And I suspect it is potentially the next agenda item, which was of interest. So as a bit of a recap of the obvious, this month, the homeowners and business owners of Millis received property tax bills that reflected change and sets up the presentation that I have requested of the Town Administrator. Our properties have appreciated, and they, in fact, they, our valuations were recalibrated. And also, the true force of the borrowing that our town, and when I say our town, not this board, not any one board, but our friends and neighbors who either went to the polls or attended town meeting and exercised their one-person, one-person vote, opted to do, which was to replace a dilapidated elementary school. So I want to remind everybody that every single budget decision is made available to the community at large through forums like this. Is there something going on from a technical standpoint that I need to worry about?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it. Sorry.
Oh, okay. So...
I don't want me up on my skirt standing on the phone.
Perfect. All right. I'll chit chat while that's happening.
Sorry.
So a couple of things happened. And I want to, I want to be clear about what the Town Administrator will be presenting and what he will not be presenting, okay? Unfortunately, when people maybe aren't participating directly and/or aren't paying attention to their opportunity to hear and participate in town financial decisions, then in fact, when you get your tax bill, and there's a little bit of out of sight, out of mind, because we made a decision as a community in June 2017, and the tax bill arrived for Q3 of the current fiscal year at the end of, in the end of the winter in 2019 or early 2020, then it comes kind of out of left field. Those people who understand the public process picked up the phone and called either the Tax Assessor's Office to understand their valuation of their property, which the state requires is done annually, or they picked up the phone to call the Tax Collector's Office to inquire about the composition of their bill. And/or they went on to the town website, where all of this information could be found in various places. Admittedly, in various places, not all centrally located in one place. So, but the other side of the, of the hall, I would say, set off somewhat of an unfortunate firestorm on a town, not a non-affiliated town, community Facebook page, Millis Public Forum. And I think, as somebody that's in communications, this is why, this is one of the things that I really ran for, and I really want to speak to it, because I take it very personally. It is very easy, in a land of Yelp, for people to sit behind their keyboards and tee off on somebody, either directly by name or just in a general sense. So when my husband sits at town meeting and somebody comes up to him not knowing who he is, and the person makes a snarky remark about the people in the front of the room, I am among them, about how they're doing their business, or when I actually take the time and I go to this particular community forum, which I in fact was an original founder of, I want everybody to know, because I thought it was really important that we do have a public community information sharing center. And I read, and I quote, that politicians, which by the way, I didn't know if you know if we're politicians, politicians are lining their pockets. I want everybody to hear from me that I take the strongest exception to that, that there was an attack, I will say for myself, of my personal integrity, of my motivation for serving, and it was deeply uncalled for and unprofessional. And anybody who knows me knows that if you send me an email or you ask the Town Administrator's Office for my phone number, that it is furnished to you without hesitation. And I have had conversations with people who only know me by name, but I've had conversations about this very topic. How did this happen? What is the history on it? Whatever question they wanted to have answered. And these, I would say, were very reasonable conversations. So I would say to the people who have the first inclination to jump on social media, to tee off on anybody, shame on you, and get involved. If there's something about our town where, what I love, and I've lived here since 1987, which means I'm nowhere close to a townie, we all know, you have to be born here, if you don't like something, or you have new ideas, and you have any amount of time and inclination, please run for office. Please volunteer for a task force, a micro project. Get involved in a committee. There are so many committees who are in such need of new faces, young, old, new to the town, been to the town, been a member of our community for a long time. But please don't turn potential volunteers like me, like Jim McCaffrey, like any number of the people seated before us who in fact are on committees, don't tee off on us, because we're people, and we're your neighbors, and we're your friends. And I go to the supermarket, and the bank, and restaurants, and dry cleaners. And I don't want you yelling at me about your tax bill. I didn't love my tax bill either. Shocker. Who wants to have pay more taxes? But I'm excited about what we as a community decided to do. So I want to acknowledge that in my singular opinion, and it's probably not shared, in my singular opinion, I think one of the things that we learn is that if there's something that didn't go the way you thought it would go, it becomes a teachable moment. So the teachable moment for me is two things. One is, it is my opinion that the town has been, that the town is in need of owning its own Facebook page, that this is something that is done in communities all around us, and it is done because those communities have robust staffs. So those of you who know college-age students who have any interest in community service, in acquiring some very important business skills, perhaps you are a stay-at-home parent, and you have a writing capability, we would be thrilled for you to participate in sharing the news about Millis, to Millis the community. And we are working with our town council to develop the policy so that we can empower town employees in a reasonable level, in a way that the Town Administrator can oversee, in order to make outbound messages, so that perhaps the town, the people who were inclined to dive on to Millis Public Forum and attack people like me, instead would hear from the town. So that's one thing. It would have been my desire to have a letter to go into that real estate tax bill. But I met with the finance team, they're very smart people, and our Town Administrator, and they indicated to me that they felt that everything had been transparent, everything, all of these decisions were made by all of us in this room, assuming everybody here is a resident. And I apologize, because I don't recognize some of the faces that are here. So in that respect, we're kind of telling people what they already know. And what I can tell you is that those people who have taken the time to either email or call, and you're going to get those numbers, so please get a pen if you're watching this at home, those people who've taken the time to call either the Tax Collector's Office or the Assessor's Office, have found very helpful people who have been more than happy to either make an in-person appointment for them or to walk them through their bills on the phone. And once they have that one-on-one explanation, people seem, I think, fairly satisfied, that they better understand the process. So what I asked the Town Administrator to do on behalf of his finance team was to provide the community of Millis, to demystify the past. We're not changing anything. We are simply reviewing what is known and what has been practiced for centuries, probably, but certainly decades, as the public process of making financial decisions, which we all make together, so that everybody understands and can answer the question, oh, my gosh, how did I get such a big tax bill? And then if you still have questions pertaining to your specific bill, those are questions that you will be able to take the phone number that will be shown by Mr. Gzinski on a slide, or go to millis.org and go to either the Office of Assessing or the Tax Collector's Office, where you will be able to find the contact people who will be able to answer any questions that you have. And with that, I would like to invite Mr. Gzinski to make a presentation to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully, this will be informational. I don't necessarily expect it to make taxpayers feel a lot better about the increase in their bill. I understand it's, it's never a fun thing to have an increase in a tax bill, but hopefully, this will provide some clarity, so people can better understand the bill and answer those questions. And at the end, provide some information about who they can contact should there be questions about their particular bill. I believe it's the intention with the board's approval to post this information on the town's website tomorrow, as well as additional backup information for those that are interested in learning more about this process. So I'd like to start by actually thanking the Finance Director and the finance team of the town for putting this information together. I did meet with them a number of times, and we've put this together in the hopes of providing that clarity. I'm not going to go through all the calculations here tonight. On the form, there's an example of the tax bill based on an average tax bill. But at home, the taxpayers will be able to plug in their own valuation and be able to go through those numbers themselves. And if for any reason they feel those numbers don't match, they can certainly, again, contact the individuals we're going to post at the end. So let me go through this a little bit, starting from the beginning. So this involves the fiscal year 2020 tax bill. Just a little bit of assessing, assessment background. The date of assessment for this tax bill is January 1, 2019. So that's the date the assessors use for the assessments. For residential properties, sales are from, are shown on January 2000, sales, I'm sorry, are shown for calendar year 2018. And the value for fiscal year is shown on the January 2020 tax bill. So the third quarter tax bill you received will show the actual value. I think the next item of critical importance is to understand that in Millis, we have a quarterly tax bill system, and that the first two tax bills that are, that are sent out are estimated tax bills. Those tax bills are essentially what the average tax bill was for the prior fiscal year. So essentially, those bills do not have any increase for the fiscal year that we're in now. It's not until you receive the third and fourth quarter tax bills that you'll see those increases come into effect. And because of that, the actual increase is double per quarter what it would be, because you're making up for the entire year. So the total increase from year over year is made up in those third and fourth quarters. I did hear there was some confusion of individuals thinking their tax bills went up 40 or 50%. Almost certainly, in the vast majority of those cases, it's actually half that or less. But again, if there's questions on that, I do strongly recommend that individuals contact the town officials directly about their particular bill. I want to talk a little bit about filing for an appeal or an abatement application. All taxpayers do have until the third quarter tax bill due date to file for an appeal. Owners can provide information with an application to back up their opinion of value. Please note that the deadline for the FY 2020 abatement application is Monday, February 3, 2020. So that has to be filed with the Assessor's Office, and taxpayers must pay the third quarter bill in order to file for an abatement. Following this, and again, we're going to post this on the town's website, is a, really just a tax bill example on how the tax bills are calculated. Up there, we have the average tax bill from FY 19, and then the average tax bill from FY 20. For those that would like to plug in their value into the FY 20 average value number and do the calculation, that should show what your, what your tax bill is for this year. And again, we have some explanations on this form about how these, these numbers are calculated, and the fact that the, you see in, just for example, the first and second quarter bills show the average is $1,838.68, but the third and fourth quarters are $2,326.29 apiece. And again, the third and fourth quarter bills have to make up for the total increase of the entire fiscal year. So again, I think a lot of people had thought that the quarterly rate would be what would be going forward in the next fiscal year as well. So they actually doubled their estimated increase. Also, on the Community Preservation Act, those numbers are noted on the bill, and the exemptions in outstanding water and sewer and stormwater liens are applied to the actual tax bill. I don't know if the board had any questions about that, this first page of the information?
No.
Okay. So going to the second page is just talking a little bit about some of the background for these increases in the tax bill. And talking a little bit, we have had some debt exclusions over the past nine years. We actually had a large one, a large debt exclusion about two years ago. A debt exclusion vote allows a town to raise tax revenue in addition to that generated under the Prop 2.5 levy. Proposition 2.5 limits the annual increase in tax revenue to 2.5% plus amounts generated by new growth. These additional tax revenues pay for debt, principal and interest, borrowed for a specific purpose. In this way, the town can build a school or other building and not fund it from its existing revenues. In other words, a debt exclusion is a means of funding a particular project with a temporary increase in the levy limit. The debt is excluded from, that is exempt from, the levy limitations of Prop 2.5. Millis has the following debt exclusions currently in effect. You'll see in 2010, the town authorized $5 million for the construction of a public library. In 2013, the town authorized two projects, a police and fire station, construction and renovation, as well as the purchase of a fire truck. The police and fire stations were approved at $9,961,088, and the fire truck at $850,000. And most recently, in 2017, the town voted to replace the current Clyde F. Brown School with a new building for a total project approval of $51,872,799. We were fortunate to get a large state grant through the MSBA program for $21,423,711, for a total town-approved cost of $30,449,088. So also on the chart, you'll see the number of voters in the town, the votes taken at town meeting and at the ballot in regards to the approval of those items. You'll also see the term of debt service and the years that those debts will fall off. It goes from 2033 to 2045, depending on the project. So that, the largest impact to this year's tax bill was the fact that the borrowing for the school project, the main funding of that hit the tax bills this year, and that was the main reason for the increase of the tax bills. And actually, below that, you'll see some links. Again, that'll be on the town's website for those that want additional, to review additional budgetary information and guides to property tax laws in Massachusetts, if you want to do any research and look in any more detail at that information. Any questions on that page, the board? Karen, if you could just put the last page. So again, if individual property owners and taxpayers have concerns or questions about their valuation of their property and like to speak to someone from the town about that, they should contact Teresa Gonzalez, who's the town's assessor. Her phone number is up there as well. And again, this will be posted on the homepage of the town's website, so there'll be a link directly to all this information as of tomorrow. If for whatever reason, your question does not involve your valuation, you could contact If for whatever reason, your question does not involve your valuation, you could contact the treasurer or the Finance Director. Again, usually the main issue involving the tax bills has to do with people not agreeing with the valuation that's given to their property, and there is a statutory appeal and abate, abatement process for that. We do, again, we encourage people who do feel that, that the valuation on their property is not appropriate and they do not agree with it, they have until February 3rd to apply for an abatement. And I don't know if the Finance Director has anything else to add on that, or I think we covered it.
Thank you, Mr. Gzinski. I want to mention a couple of things. So Mr. Gzinski indicated that if you feel that your property valuation is not appropriate, and again, remember that it's as of January 1st, 2019, there are, there is specific paperwork that must be completed, and it must be, it's date stamped. So it's, you can't get it in outside of the very specified hour of the day on February 3rd. So you need to go to the Assessing Office, and that's where that paperwork can be found. Second thing is that on Saturday, February 8th, this is another calendar opportunity for everybody, the Select Board will be hosting the Fiscal Year 21, that's the fiscal year that starts on July 1, 2020. We will be hosting the Fiscal Year 21 Department Budget Hearings and Proposals that will be provided to the community and facing this board, but open to the community, all day here, and that is a Saturday. They're open to the community, they will be televised if you have questions. This is an ideal time to come and learn about a specific department and to have some of your questions answered. But again, this is our taxpayer money, and you have capable leaders in positions of trust who are telling the community what they hope to do in terms of services that will meet with, that will fit the priorities of the town and the need of the town. One of the other things I've had conversations about is, you know, there's a lot of meetings. There are a lot of meetings. You get to pick from them. So I would like to tell everybody that we have in 2020, we in fact have three elections, not two, because we have an extra primary, a national primary that is in March. We have elections in May and November. So those, the May and November are constitutional, you know, two days that we have all the time, for the most part, I guess, if you have a presidential in November. And we also have town meetings. Those happen in May and November. So those are probably at the outside five dates. So if you could go to the website, or you can call Karen Bure or Maureen Kinesi in the Town Administrator's Office to get those specific dates, mark them on your calendar, make arrangements for whether it's elder care or childcare. Please participate, please go to the polls, and please get involved in any committees, because we want your ideas, we want your energy, and what we'd love to do is take any negativity and channel it into something really constructive and exciting for our town. And now that I've talked to the point of having no oxygen, Mr. McCaffrey, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to state that no one here is suggesting that for some taxpayers, this creates a hardship. That is something that we are aware of, and as was indicated earlier, there is a process for abatement that could be utilized. There's also a senior work program in place here in town where certain seniors volunteer their time and effort in Town Hall and are able to work off some of the tax burden that is placed upon them by the property tax. I think that we still work together as best we can to try and find new sources of revenue. We're hopeful that there are certain things that will be happening over the next year or two that will provide some additional revenue, which may be able to help us to reduce some of the pressure from the property tax. But as my colleague indicated, we're in a situation now where there's a series of things that have occurred over the last four or five years where projects were approved, and the last project was the biggest by far, and this is the time when that project begins to hit the tax bill directly. Now, I would also indicate, just, and it's not intended to be defensive, it's just trying to explain. Back in 2017, if you went back and looked at some of the material that was presented to the voters, there was an estimate made that the average homeowner would be paying $865 in additional real estate tax in the first year that there was a bonding for this school building. So the number was 865. We finally got to the point, the place the bonding occurred, and the tax bill for the average home is $856, just a little bit lower than what was, what was anticipated. Now, there's a lot of variables going on here about increases in valuation, increases and decreases in interest rates, and timing, which is again, an issue that was described based upon the fact that we have to make up some ground in the second and third quarters. But the fact of the matter is that the estimated amount came in pretty close to what we ultimately ended up with when you get to this, this point in time. Again, I'm not saying it makes it any less painful, but it is something that we believe was fairly representative to the voters and presented in a way that was our obligation then to deliver on that message, deliver, which we did. So I'm not trying to get any pats on the back here, just indicating that, you know, we do have some accountability to try to deliver for the voters what was approved by the voters. And I guess my last point is also a call for participation. Fact of the matter is that participation needs to incur, increase. If folks don't want additional projects to go forward, they need to come and say so and vote against them. You'll notice on one of these projects, which was the police and fire, that project was approved at the polls by six votes. So your vote makes a difference. I'm not suggesting you don't go for it, or you go for it. I'm just asking you, at the, at the very least, to participate at election time because you have the decision to be made. The decision is made by you as to whether or not we incur these large projects coming down the pike. Well, many of them are already here, so, anyway. And if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask or comments they'd like to make, I'll leave it to the chair.
I just wanted to add one thing to what my colleague said. So Teresa Gonzalez, our fairly new town assessor. One of the areas of expertise that she brings to Millis at a higher level is her knowledge what with, what is a changing portfolio of possible relief programs that might be available for seniors. And when I say seniors, I know I'm in that group, right? I get that. But having said that, she is in fact going to be, at our request, exploring what these options might be for Millis. They would not happen overnight. There's a lot of state statutory requirements for this. But the fact is, we have somebody who has some prior experience with this that is new for our town. I'm looking right at our Director of Finance. This is where you nod and say yes, okay? And as a result, I think she's going to bring us a new level of knowledge that we hope can in fact be translated into an expanded offering to seniors to provide some tax relief. And she started to describe it, and I realized I needed my PhD in, in tax and finance, so when she has had the opportunity, and she's already started that process in terms of investigating, and so when she has a program that, that this board wants to, feels is ready and makes sense for the town, then what we will do is we will certainly make that opportunity public. I also want to acknowledge in the audience, somebody who plays, also, Ask a Busy Person, but he's very overcommitted, Craig Schultz. Craig Schultz has been on the Finance Committee for a long time, he's also on a zillion other committees. But I want to acknowledge that Craig also was the recipient of some fairly intemperate comments on the Millis Public Forum. They were unfair, they were unprofessional, they were uncalled for. And I just want to acknowledge that for you, Craig, because Craig actually tried to do what people were asking for, which was to clarify some information, and he did so in a very dispassionate and knowledgeable way. And then a member of our community, somebody we, we see all the time, somebody we probably, you know, know, you know, just frankly, in my, from my perspective, teed off. So I hope part of the lesson here is that we're all in this together. You know, we're volunteers. We're trying to make the town a better place, we're trying to make good decisions, we're trying to share information liberally. That's what this was all about. That's entirely what this was all about, is to say, we get it. We don't like big tax bills either, but we're trying to be really smart, and we're trying to make good on the promises that we made. And I think Mr. McCaffrey's recount of the projected impact versus the actual, and how close that was in terms of the projection, you know, should bring some amount of confidence that you have people working really hard, really smart people who are working really hard, in particular in finance. Our Treasurer Collector was very strategic in how she mapped out the bonding and the borrowing for the school. She, she had some exquisite timing in terms of interest rate. She actually saved us money. So I just want to thank everybody for listening. If, again, reminding everybody that individual, we know people aren't happy, we know that this is what brought some of you out tonight, we want to acknowledge that, not, not run from it. Having said that, I'd like to shift from the complaints, since I think we're pretty clear about what those are, but if there are any comments that are not specific to your individual bill, which you know how to get that information, but if there are any other comments that people are inclined to share, not only with this board and our Director of Finance, who's also in the audience, but the community as a whole, I'd like to offer you the microphone to do so. Please. And I just remind you, when you come to the microphone, you table or microphone, and just make sure that you say who you are into the microphone, please.
My name's Stephanie McCabe, I live on Walnut Street. I just didn't know if you guys had any, maybe any other plans to maybe help out the taxpayer by making any cuts in any other departments that would help bring down the tax rates at all? Maybe helping out with some cuts somewhere that might help before we maybe get some revenue from COMCAM and the other things that we're hoping for? Are there any cuts available in any of the towns?
So I can tell you that that process of contemplation would happen again in public starting really on February 8th. With the budget hearings. So if you have, yep, and if you have specific ideas about where you think a cut might be merited, I would.
I don't put that one on me. I would put that on somebody who would know better than me, and I don't hear any of that being available. I have not heard that been available. It just seems just all spending and no.
Well, so again, not to be defensive, because I'm all about fiscal conservatism too, I would say one of the things we have spent some time over past years is trying to reinvent government. We have a tri-board meeting, which is Finance Committee, the School Committee, and the Select Board, and they are looking at ways to identify ways to change how we share revenue and/or potentially reallocate and partner with resources. So I think the mindset of everybody that I can represent from a leadership perspective is, we joined as a volunteer to reinvent government. Our plan was not to join and then see how many people we could hire and how many things we could do inefficiently. In fact, quite the contrary, we, we, I'll speak for myself, I submitted myself for the community because I felt I had new ideas, things that we could do. Oh, thank you.
So that's all, I just wanted to throw it out there in the general.
Yep, I think that's good. Thank you, and we'll take that into February 8th, and every department will have heard that as well. Is there anybody else? And thank you so much for coming. Anybody else? Any other comments? Are we good?
I've got a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to, no, I just.
And who are you, sir?
Craig Schultz.
Hi, Craig Schultz.
Quick question, just to clarify.
Yes.
I think I know the answer, but I think it needs to be said, possibly. As more homes come into the community, especially with Glenn Ellen coming online, how many homes is that?
324.
As 324 more homes join the community, at a relatively high assessed value, I would imagine, the debt exclusions we have, not the tax base, but the debt exclusions, that $30 million for the school, that will be spread over more homes. What impact would that have on the per home? Would that have a beneficial impact on the homes that are currently paying? In other words, would it lower, that, that $30 million be spread over more homes, so it would lower the bill conceivably?
It would.
Yeah.
For, for a detailed financial breakdown of that, I'd have to defer that.
Not looking for that, just looking for the concept that as more homes come into the community, those fixed costs like the debt exclusions, fire trucks, police, library, other items like that, that should drive down the tax cost. Not the assess, assessments that pay for general operating, that would just be more money coming in. But this is a given amount of money, so it shouldn't, it should be beneficial as those come online. Can't quantify it.
The total payment is divided by the number of, the number of taxpayers.
Right, exactly.
We add, and it's not just Glenn Ellen, because of course, we have projects going on at, in Acorn Street and whatnot. I mean, the flip side of trying to restrain the budget cost is trying to find new revenue.
Right.
And it, and it is certainly on, online, we see these places coming online over at the Glenn Ellen Project, as well as Acorn Street. The other thing that will, will happen on the debt, particularly the debt like this one, it's a long-term bond which, which each year, we, it's made up a principal and interest payment. So actually, this year will be the highest payment for the school, and it will gradually decline over time because principal's being paid off.
Right.
Now, the flip side of that would be, and this really speaks to your issue, if that relief comes along, does that mean that we just turn around and build something else? Well, that's the question. I mean, there are other needs, but that's where public debate comes in, that's where the community needs everyone's input, because at some point, you know, other needs will raise their hands, and we have to decide as a community whether or not we want to support those, or whether we want to get really behind, you know, reductions in tax burden.
Right, and I think it's clear, I think it needs to be, just, I agree entirely with what you said, but some people might not be as well-versed in municipal finances as the rest of us, that $30 million for the school can only be used for the school. So as debt relief comes along for that, we can't spin that into a council on aging building without another vote and another override.
Nothing new gets done without being voted on by the town and the town meeting.
Right. And my other question is conceptual, again, no, so, around revaluation, because the comment that I heard is if we just doubled the valuation on home, our taxes would double. But the way I understand Prop 2 and 1/2, we're constrained by the total revenue the town brings in can only grow by 2 and 1/2 percent exclusive and override. So if everybody in this home, this town's property doubled in value, our tax rate would actually fall by half, I would imagine, just on a, on a broad.
A real fact, a real fact. The underlying tax rate without the school was $18.70 last year. This year, because valuations increased, it was $18.07. So the underlying tax rate actually declined, and that's because you cannot raise revenue by more than 2 and 1/2 percent. As, as Craig indicated, even if, even if the valuations doubled, we're still restrained, constrained by 2 and 1/2. Now, that doesn't mean we can't cut, but you can't go up more than 2 and 1/2 in the aggregate.
Right.
People who believe that 2 and 1/2 protects the individual taxpayer, you're misinformed. That's not the way it works. But the underlying tax rate here actually declined in 2020. That was more than made up for the school, which was, I got the number here, $2.07. So it goes down 70 and up 207, and that creates the new tax rate of $20.14.
Right. And I think that's what's so tricky about it. People don't understand, if they look at the tax rate being $20 per thousand, and that's meaningless without having the values of the homes.
You've got to know what the value is.
Right, and so those are the two things that, that I just have tried to make sure people understand whenever I speak to them, many neighbors. Thank you.
And you were very nice to do so, Craig, and I just want to say that as we add houses, I want to be clear, we also add operating costs to the town. So it's not just that we're getting, you know, new tax revenue, but we now have more people involved, you know, tied into our utility infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater, road clearing, public safety, streetlights, roads, things like that. So it's not simply that we get a whole lot more revenue, we also have more costs that come with that. And this is motivating Craig to come back to the microphone.
But just to be clear, many, many of those costs are fees, the water, the stormwater, all of those are going to be direct paid. And that's the smart growth that's been put in place with the over 55. The biggest single burden to the town is, a cost to the town is the cost of education. Without bringing students in, the nominal cost that the over 55 housing will bring in is more than going to offset the tax rate they pay. When a home comes in with four, with three or four children in it, it, until the children are out of school, it's a net loss, I think, on the tax. it's a net loss, I think, on the tax rate when we were looking at it a few years ago. But the over 55 should contribute to a better operating position. But the other ones were all fee-based, so they won't change.
That's true. That's fair.
Part of the challenge, of course, is that people, and many of the people in this room and throughout town have been hearing this for a while, yes, Glenn Ellen is going to save us, yes, marijuana's going to save us, yes, further business expansion is going to save us. Nothing happens quite at the pace you would like it to happen. I would say that if the Glenn Ellen Project was a hundred homes ahead of where it is today, this tax burden would be lower. But it isn't. It takes time, and for those of you who live on Orchard Street or drive Orchard Street, you understand the cost of putting in sewer and water and gas and the disruption that occurs. And I'm not asking people to be patient, but these things, I know you get impatient with because you've been hearing about it for a long time, and still, you get the burden. So, those projects are in place. They are moving apace, and we will do everything we can to support reasonable and neighborhood-friendly development. Because even the development, as you well know, the development means somebody next door doesn't like it, because they've lived next to the woods for a long time, and that process takes a long time. This sounds like an apology. I'm not, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I agree with my colleague, we're committed to try to make these new revenue sources start to produce, and we will see some, and we're more than, I think we need to communicate to the community what those, what that revenue stream is once it starts to come in. And we will see some of that in the coming fiscal year of 2021. If you drive by ComCam, they seem to be busy. I hope they're very busy. And I understand that people are frustrated. I mean, part of the thing is that, you know, if you're in public life, you're going to get some blowback. I mean, and I'm perfectly entitled to the blowback. I did get my paycheck today for the second quarter, no, the second half of the year, two hundred dollars. I'd be happy to give it to any of you, because it's not, we're not doing this for the money. Okay, Steve will take it, that's for sure. But anyway, I do appreciate folks coming and being interested enough to challenge us, because that's your right. I'd say it's almost your duty, but don't take it too seriously.
I'm fine with being challenged, but I'm not fine with unprofessional. So, I also wanted to tell everybody that this Thursday, we have a State Economic Development Officer who we've been very fortunate to connect with, and in fact, this particular individual was extremely helpful to the town when we could have had a big problem, which was that Columbia Gas had been prohibited from doing work by the governor, and as a result, the entire Glenn Ellen Glen Regency project and all of the houses that had been sold, but not necessarily occupied, and all of the butters who were dealing with the inconvenience of Orchard Street, and that had to do in part with getting the gas line put in, were going to be put on hold, and that could have actually pushed out this project a significant amount of time with very real financial consequences to the town and certainly to the people who had purchased homes there and were expecting to heat them and live in them. And I just want to say that it's because of the people who are inside a town hall and the people that are sitting on this board that that meeting has happened, and anybody who's interested in the topic of economic development, that we have a really great committee, but we could always use more people, and we are truly always looking for ways to attract new business. We had a new business receive their license this evening. So, if somebody is in business and they fit the zoning regulations and they feel that Millis is a place where they can be successful, we're very happy to diversify the portfolio of business and hopefully to attract new business and new employers. So, I think we'll move on, but I want to, I think, I don't regret the time spent on this, because I know that this has been a predominant conversation in the town, so we wanted to acknowledge it, wanted to thank everybody who's, for whom this was the interest that motivated them, and I see people kind of wrestling, so I think we're going to have a big, loud exit.
Could we just, as a last point--
Yes.
--remind people again that if you have an issue--
Yes.
--with your tax bill--
Yes.
--with relation to the valuation of your property--
Yes.
--please contact the assessor's office. It's not, it's not a difficult hurdle to get over to file your appeal. The office is ready to show you what you need to submit, so we urge you to do that, because that is your right, and it's the right of every taxpayer in this town who is uncomfortable with the valuation of the property, to appeal that valuation.
And the date by which those documents must be submitted again is February 3rd. So, we look forward to seeing a lot of people to attend the fiscal year 21 budget hearings on Saturday, February 8th, and at this point, I'm going to invite one of the presenters to that hearing, our Fire Chief, Mr. Richard Barrett, to please come forward. He is going to speak about the approval of a Norfolk County Control Mutual Aid Agreement for Joint Fire Rescue and Ambulance Service, and to our neighbor who wanted to talk about department cuts, one of the other ways that we achieve efficiencies is by collaboration and sharing resources, and this is that type of agreement. So, it's not necessarily department cuts, per se, but it's in partnering and leveraging partner relationships with other communities. Chief Barrett, thank you for being so patient.
Good evening. I won't take much of your time. This is pretty straightforward, mutual aid agreement with the Town of Medfield and the Town of Medway. With us running at the ALS paramedic level, there are times when our mutual aid partners are short paramedics, or they need some assistance, and we send our paramedics to that town to help out. Part of the agreement covers reimbursement, so when we send a paramedic there, we split the cost, we split the revenue of the call with that community, and this agreement simply gives our billing agency the right to invoice for half of the ALS call.
And we've been doing this for a while, correct? We do this on an annual basis, renew this agreement?
This is new with the ALS. We have our mutual aid agreement that is in place, and that, once you set that up, it kind of runs forever. But this is new to us, because usually, up until a year ago, we were the recipients of the paramedic intercept. Now, we're able to provide that to other communities.
And while you're here, for those people for whom ALS is a new term, could you just tell everybody the benefit of the work and the commitment that you've made and the taxpayers made to support it?
Taxpayers made, yep. So, for the last three years, we've been improving the Fire Department by adding paramedics to our staff and increasing our medical response from a basic life support to advanced life support. We're able to provide medication, cardiac monitoring, IVs, you know, trauma treatment, things that we always had to outsource. We would be able to handle the initial response and then require paramedics from other departments or agencies to come in and assist us. For the last year, we've been able to do that, and that was with the support of the community, the Finance Committee, and this board.
Okay, and this contract goes from, it's retroactive, correct? From November?
It is.
To--
I do not believe it expires. It's an ongoing agreement.
In perpetuity?
Yep.
Okay, great. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Again, thank you--
Yes.
--Chief, for taking the initiative here. I think it's important for us to realize that we do the best we can to take care of everybody, and sometimes we need a little help, and sometimes they need a little help.
That's it.
So, so, this is the Norfolk County Control Mutual Aid Agreement, then, for Medfield and Norfolk and Millis.
And Medway.
Medfield--
So, Norfolk County is the county we're in. This is a mutual aid agreement that all--
Well, this is the format.
Right.
Yeah. So, with Medfield--
And Medway.
Medway.
Yep.
Okay.
So, if you're in M-Town, you're in.
And we already have one with Norfolk. That was an agreement we've had for years.
Got it.
Yep.
Excellent.
So, Madam Chair--
Yes, sir.
--make a motion that, who's going to execute this on our behalf?
I would recommend that the Chair--
Chair of the Board? So, I move that the Board approve the form of the Norfolk County Control Mutual Aid Agreement for Joint Fire Rescue and our ambulance service between the towns of Millis, Medfield, and Medway, and authorize the Board Chair to execute the contract on behalf of the town.
Second, so moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I did say aye. It was under my breath.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being patient. Thank you very much. Next up is the presentation recommendation by the Town Administrator for a contract to study the DPW operational analysis, and it would be helpful probably in the scheme of financial management that you might want to provide a little bit of retroactive information about this.
Sure, absolutely. So, this study is being conducted in order to review both the operational and financial aspects of the Department of Public Works, with a specific focus on the division of labors and the financial responsibilities associated with both the basic highway function and general functions of the department, as well as its enterprise utility functions, being the sewer, the water, the stormwater, I believe, and the, including the transfer station as well, to be able to review those, to see if the department is appropriately staffed and the staff are appropriately utilized towards those different functions, and that the cost allocation among the taxpayers, as well as the ratepayers, is done appropriately, and to also, for the study to make recommendations on changes, should that be out of kilter at any point during their review. So, acting upon the Board's directive, the DPW Director, the Finance Director, and I did conduct an accelerated process to solicit proposals for a comprehensive study of the management and operations of the DPW. We did solicit proposals from four different firms who specialize in these projects. We did receive complete proposals from two of the four companies. After a thorough review of the two proposals, we are recommending that Community Paradigm Associates LLC be awarded the contract for this project. Both proposals were solid. We believe that both companies had the wherewithal to complete this, but we felt in the case of Community Paradigm, that they submitted a comprehensive work plan, and they have very extensive experience in these types of public management projects. In addition, they have successfully completed two major consulting projects with the town. They're very knowledgeable of the town's budget, the town's operational processes, and a number of the town's administrative staff. In this situation, I believe that that provides extra benefit, as this will assist them in expediting the study, so it can be completed within the tight timeframe that the Board had established. I'm requesting that the Board approve the awarding of the contract for this project to Community Paradigm Associates, and to authorize me to sign the agreement for these services. The Board had approved an amount up to 25,000. Their proposal came in at 22,000.
I would just say, I read the proposals that were provided in both cases. The resumes of the participating consultants are very deep, with decades of experience in both public policy, public sector, public finance backgrounds, which are all relevant. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, Madam Chair, I also reviewed them. Seems to me that we had two good selections. The Community Paradigm proposal was a bit less than the other one. The Matrix one, they proposed 24/9. It was a slight savings to the town in selecting the Community Paradigm Associates Group. They were also committing to a delivery date of the March 11th, which is a very aggressive date, but that's part of what we asked them to do, to try and get this thing put together and resolved before we have to commit to budgets for 2021. So, I can support the awarding to them, and we need to get them working sooner rather than later. If I can make a motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the Town Administrator's recommendation to engage Community Paradigm Associates to complete the review of the DPW operations and enterprise fund allocations at a fee not to exceed $22,000.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That work will begin immediately. Next up is a revisit of a license which requested change of hours for the FinFur and Feather Club to, specifically, to expand their inside range only hours for Sunday morning, and that was a point of confusion that was not clear in the paperwork when we did the licenses at the end of last year, and this Board was naturally concerned about the noise from skeet shooting at 7:00 a.m. on a Sunday, because there was not an indication that that would be exclusive to inside. So, that aspect of their license was denied by the Board. The President of the organization has come back and clarified that they were looking only for an expansion of hours for the inside range, and indicated significant growth across a variety of groups, young and old, women and men, boys and girls, and scouts and such, and feel that the organization has had a lot more people to provide this resource to. Its membership has grown from 200 in year 2004 to 730, and they've been a good friend, I think, to the community. So, I think that our reluctance, I speak to myself, but I recall the conversation was that we were just reluctant to subject neighbors to, naturally, the sounds of skeet shooting at 7:00 a.m. on a Sunday, and the organization has come back to us to clarify that, no, this would be for the indoor range only. So, it's on the agenda to revisit that aspect of their license.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm a little confused, because if I read the letter, I thought the letter was addressing an expansion of the outdoor range.
You know what? Now that I see this paragraph, it does say that. It says, "The outdoor range was never included." I think we're still at the same, I'm in agreement with you.
But I, you know, I have no problem with this. I have, there's no indication that butters have been concerned. There is, you know, an organization that is committed to the town. Certainly, it's subject to any applicable rules relative to noise and the noise bylaw. So, at this point, I'd be willing to support it, but I just want to make sure we're acting on the correct--
Mm-hmm.
Or not acting, you know--
Right.
--on the correct request. I mean, if we feel as though we need clarification, further clarification, we can always ask for it.
I don't know, I think I'm looking to Karen, because she is the person who discusses this, and you're right.
Well, I will tell you, it does look like it's for the outside range. I will tell you that, as far as I know, there has never been a complaint about any noise. They are far away from any neighbors. The majority of our police department belong to the club and are often there. I would leave that up to you.
No--
They've always been good neighbors. I don't think we've ever had an issue with them, to my knowledge.
Well, we could always offer a license that runs for three months, say, and if we get--
Yeah. If you have any issues, you just say no. Pulling it.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I don't live near them, and, but I know that I would not want the sound of gunshot at 7:00 a.m. on a Sunday, and I don't think that's an uncommon response to that, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion. I know that was the intent of the group before, was to be protective of those in the immediate area.
Certainly.
Well, I would make the motion that we grant the license to include the outdoor shooting range from, basically, it's sunup to sunset--
Mm-hmm.
--for the FinFur and Feather Club on Sundays for the period January 13th through March 31st, subject to renewal.
All right.
I'm fine. Or we could do it that automatic renewal unless we have complaints. Do you want to do that?
Well, that puts a burden on neighbors to come forward. I mean, I just--
Okay.
Okay.
It's barely, whatever the-- That's fine. I mean, if you want to amend it so that we could do it with, if we've, no neighbors complains, then it can be extended to the end of the year.
Right.
Okay.
Seconded as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no opposition, the license is approved, conditional to no problems with noise. The next two items on the agenda, we're getting near the end, folks. The next two items on the agenda are probably-- The next two items on the agenda are probably for further conversation, simply because one of our colleagues is not here, and we're a three-member board. I'll address the first one, which is, we're looking for some guidance with respect to taking the consultant report that did an analysis of the town clerk and looking at establishing some guidelines, recognizing that it's an elected position, we totally understand that, but to have some guidelines in place so if somebody says, what does the town clerk do in Millis, that there is some standing description that says, in Millis, this is what the town clerk does. And so I wanted to make use of the consultant report so that the taxpayers pay a stipend of close to $13,000 plus benefits. So there is, in fact, an investment on the part of the taxpayer, and I don't think it's an unfair question to ask, you know, where is the job description for this person who we pay through our taxes? So I just wanted to pull the job description as a preliminary out of the consultant report and put it before the Board to say, I would like to discuss this further, I think probably when Pete is back, to see if there's an appetite to establish some realm of guidelines for the basic framework for the position.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd just make a comment.
Yeah.
First comment would be that the Board has no authority to issue a job description for the town clerk's position. The town clerk's position is established under the Charter, and it's an elected position, and it states that the elected officials, the elected officials shall have all of the powers and duties set forth in the bylaws of the town and the Constitution and general laws of the Commonwealth.
Mm-hmm.
What that means is that if we are going to ask to the town to act upon some kind of, I'll call it, list of responsibilities and duties, seems to me the only way we would be able to do that would be to propose a bylaw for the town meeting to consider and adopt. It really doesn't fall within the, and the Board of Selectmen can certainly recommend a bylaw, but we, I don't believe we have the authority to issue a job description.
Well, yes. I mean, basically, a job description would, at this point, would simply be a guide set out by the Board as to what it would like to see as far as a town clerk, but a town clerk as an elected official?
Yeah, the elected, the citizens can elect anybody they want.
Right.
No matter what we say. And I'm not really in favor of putting stuff up there that people are just going to ignore because it doesn't speak, doesn't have any authority.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Essentially, a town clerk job description would only have force and effect if it was an appointed position and the job description was issued by the appointing authority. So it would, it would not hold any force and effect of law. It would simply be almost like a resolution of the Board, and that's, that would be up to the Board to decide whether there's merit to that or not.
So curious, we have, this is among a variety of positions that are up in the upcoming election, so if somebody says, what does this position do, where do they go? What is the commitment? What is the time commitment? What is, what are the core responsibilities? What are the relevant, transferable business experiences? Where do they go?
Well, there are, from a legal perspective, there are, the guidelines would fall with the state. The state does issue certain statutory responsibilities of the town clerk. Beyond that, and beyond anything that may or may not be in the town's bylaws in regards to the position, it would simply fall to whatever the town clerk determined was within the scope of their responsibilities, and that's essentially how the elected?
Well, let me just interrupt for a second. I mean, the statutory provisions which govern what the town clerks, some of the town clerk's responsibilities vis-à-vis the state, the Charter sets forth a broad outline. I would point out that there aren't any job descriptions for the Board of Health, for the Board of Selectmen, a select board, for the school committee, the other elected officials. Now, maybe that's a big problem, but the voters will decide who it is they want to serve in these positions, because they vote for them. And I don't feel as though we should be putting out, you know, job guidelines or whatever you want to call them, where the voters are the ones that have the authority and not the Board. I mean, that just might be a bit, I mean, and I agree that this is something that certainly the full Board should discuss.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure you understood where I was coming from.
Nope. I understand. Totally understand. Next up, possibly in the same vein, it did come to light, obviously, recently with the discussion of the aforementioned real estate tax bills, but it's certainly not the only issue. We had a situation over the weekend where the transfer station was closed. I was asked to do a community post, because we don't have a mechanism of town media. So I think the time has come for us to go where a lot of other communities have gone, is to figure out how to have a manageable outbound-only, not a discussion forum, but an information venue that can be quickly and easily accessed, and that probably, if you look at some of the model towns that have done this, would amount to a community Facebook page, where anything from a news perspective that might direct people back to information, maybe there's an announcement about meetings that are coming up, committee meetings, maybe there's, you know, announcement about the Recreation Department newest catalog, but whatever it is, this would be an outbound channel for the town to maintain out of Town Hall. And I think it's really important that the town understand that this is a major way that people acquire news. And I think, and in hindsight is always perfect vision, I think if we'd had, we've had something like this in place, I think a lot of the vitriol would have been neutralized pretty quickly. So I think town media, town social media policy was last revisited, I think, in 2015, and now a lot has changed, and I would like to see town council work with the town administrator on updating the intent of that to something that is actionable, practical, but in fact can be media that is owned out of the Town Hall, and I think the citizens are really looking for that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The social media policies that we have in place are designed to restrict and, not restrict, govern social media activity outside of the town. So employees who are deciding that they want to post something on a Facebook page that is run by somebody else, we've got guidelines to say how you should do this. How you have to be responsible, how you have to treat people with dignity and respect, how you have to make sure that people understand that you're posting on a Facebook page, that you're doing this on your own, that you don't have the authority to speak for the town. So we have a, unless the town designates you as such. So that really is not relevant to what would we do if we decided that the town of Millis should maintain, at the town government level, a Facebook page for, as you describe, as outbound communication. I certainly, that would be town officials with the authority to issue statements that are appropriately peer-reviewed and accurate, so we don't get misinformation being sent out, and I think this is an important thing for us to look at. I agree 100%. You know, I, let's just say, bear a healthy skepticism for the value of social media, which the Chair is well aware of. But if this is a way to make a better, you know, a better mousetrap, let's look at it. But to me, the first issue is not town council. The issue is, how does one implement, what are the things you have to do from an organizational perspective to implement a Facebook page which is properly curated? And the worst thing for us to do would be to have a Facebook page which is wrong or late or missing something when people start to rely on it. So I think there's, I'm not trying to make work for the Communications Committee, but I'd like to also hear, and I'm not against getting some guidance from council, I'd also like to hear, from a Communications Committee perspective, how that, that team would view us as developing an implementation plan. It doesn't have to be an implementation plan that takes three years. You know, it can take whatever it takes, a month, two months, whatever it is. But I think it's really important for us to get a handle on what it, organizationally, what is required to have a really, and I'm sure you would agree with me, not a Facebook page, but a great Facebook page that the townsfolk can rely upon as regular communication for those who choose to do so. And it's something available to everybody. You don't have to sign up for some special system that someone else is running. And good for them. I mean, I don't think that's a problem, but I think if the town's going to do it, we need to do it well, and we need to do it correctly, and I don't mean to be gun-shy about it, but I just want to launch in a way that people can rely upon. And if we find that the volume of communication is such that we require to look at the staffing model, we need to do that. Because again, I don't want to have a Facebook page that's running three weeks behind current events, because that, then people won't go back to it. That's what they tell me, anyway.
Well, you're not wrong about that, because the most recent, we have to still figure out, and this really goes, we've had conversations about this, the master calendar on the website, which is not being used completely, so meetings, committee and board meetings aren't being posted, and it's not identifying the problem of the collisions. The example I gave tonight, Planning Board and Permanent Building Committee happening exactly the same time. Next, this Thursday, Economic Development Committee and Website and Communication Committee happening at the same time. So it does provide some challenge. So that has to be resolved, and I think the Town Administrator has a good solution for that. And then also to get, again, to your point, to culturally get the Town Hall departments to think about the website as an opportunity to announce news, bad, good, informational or whatever. And I say that because if you go to the town website right now, the most recent news post was, is from October 2019.
Yeah, and so the question is, why is that?
That's right.
And it's because we haven't committed the resources we need or assigned responsibility to somebody to keep up. So I don't want to have a website that's out of date?
Right.
And a Facebook page that's out of date.
Right.
I mean, I don't know anything about Facebook, as you can easily determine, but I suspect that you could set one up tonight.
You could.
And then it would be out there, and it would be not useful to anybody.
And you could do the inaugural post.
Right.
And I'll take your picture.
Yeah, great.
There you go. So these two items, for future discussion in particular, I would like to, I know Town Council, to your point, what we have now in place is kind of, you know, the, what you can't do, and what we have to do now?
Yeah, but it's directed not at what you do on a town website?
Right.
Or Facebook, but what you do if you choose to participate.
The problem is, the chilling effect is that when we have a major announcement like the transfer station is closed, I got a phone call asking me if I would go on to the Millis Public Forum and make that post, because the employees feel reluctant to do that, because of whatever the policy is to this point.
No, they're not reluctant to do it. They're prohibited.
Prohibited from doing it, and there you go. So I think it's time for us to acknowledge that we can be more effective, and certainly even, and certainly emergency communications, which, depending on your point of view, a transfer station would be an emergency.
Well, I, you know, there are ways to communicate, right? I mean, would it have been better to do a reverse 911? Would we have gotten more people? I mean, what had happened was, we had a vacuum.
Right.
And what do we do? Well, you know, one, one opportunity, the reverse 911 would have reached more people, except the people would have had to answer the phone. I mean, the same thing with the Facebook page. If they didn't look at it, they wouldn't have known. So there's no perfect solution?
Right.
Other than, you know, having a, an old-fashioned truck go around saying, now hear this, now hear this, there's a tree across the road, don't go down there. But I understand. It's a real thing, so how do we deal with it in a way that we can be more timely, that help our residents understand what's going on?
Right.
And hopefully, most of it's not emergency stuff, but?
Right.
I would only ask of the Board what actions that you would like me to take between now and the meeting, when all three of you?
My view would be, why don't we let the Board discuss it, and then we can decide how we want to proceed, rather than going off in 10 different directions at once? That's my view.
When the third member of the Board is back. So we can do that.
Yeah, two weeks.
And in the meantime, I think we have some information that's already come in, in terms of what other towns do and how they handle it.
Right.
So we can do that.
But the agenda item is for the Board?
Yeah.
Debate and decide what policy we want to set?
Yep.
And then have the policy folks go set it.
Right.
That's what I would think makes sense.
Right. And I think the information from other towns, though, to the extent it's already been collected, is helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's informative, so. I would say, let's set ourselves up for a good informational conversation.
I suspect that my colleague, having experienced, at least within his household, the effectiveness of Facebook page, might have an opinion on this.
There you go. All right. Last official item here is the approval of the December 2019 Water Sewer Commitment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Board approve the Water Sewer Commitment to the Collector for the month of December 2019 in the amount of $2,249.89.
So moved, and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Mention, motion carried. Consent items included, minutes, I have to be honest with you, I did not finish reading one of these. Oh, yeah, that's why, because of, I didn't go through the licenses to do the check on, to make sure that we had the right names.
I think they're brilliantly done.
Okay.
There's a list of?
Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of the December 16, 2019, 2019.
Second.
As it says.
Second.
2019.
2019, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Before we adjourn, a couple of upcoming dates. Our next select board meeting will be Monday, January 27. There will be a tri-board meeting, as I've described before, on Thursday, February 6. And all day Saturday on February 8 is our fiscal '21 Department Budget Hearing, so that is an opportunity for the community to come forward and ask the department heads about economizing, leveraging, potentially doing things with other towns, being creative, while at the same time being able to fulfill the services expectations of the town. And February 3, so that's before that, is the date by which anybody with valuation challenges has completed and submitted their paperwork to the assessing office. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move we adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll see everybody on Monday, January 27. Thank you to Millis Community Media. Thank you to the community that came out to be heard on the subject of property tax and community participation.